Call this meeting to order. If I could have roll call, Ms. Beth?
Mike Bovat.
Present.
Christian Jorgensen.
Present.
Ann Oster.
Present.
Wayne Pondinas.
Present.
Gerald Swatz.
Present.
Bill Manassopoulos.
Present.
Joe Svetnov.
Present.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
We're gonna kinda like break the agenda here. We have a very honored and special guest here tonight. We have an Eagle Scout in our presence, ladies and gentlemen. We have an individual by the name of, and I'll just read the letter. Dear Sirs, thank you for taking the time to read this letter. On behalf of the Boy Scouts in leadership of Troop 532 in Sheraville, Indiana, it's our pleasure to declare that Boy Scout Drew Prashan achieved the rank of Eagle Scout on November 29th, 2023. His Eagle Court of Honor will hopefully be in early February 2024. In your position, I'm sure that you recognize the importance of this achievement, and we certainly do, Drew. Drew earned numerous merit badges and has served his troop in leadership roles. His Eagle Scout project included design and construction of a Gaga ball pit at Coling Elementary School in St. John, Indiana. The pit featured an ADA accessible door and has already been incorporated into the physical education curriculum. Drew is a senior at Lake Central High School and plans to continue his education in college, majoring in data science. It is tradition to collect letters of congratulations for new Eagle Scouts, and that is the job of this individual, and we will be sending a letter on behalf of the newly recognized Eagle Scout, Drew Prashan. Thank you very much, Drew. If you could kinda, if you'd like to come up here to the podium, please, step up here. We could see this young man and acknowledge him. If everybody, could we just give him a hand clap? Thank you. And then Drew, did you have any comments or something that you cared to say?
I just wanted to say thank you guys for having me here today and breaking the agenda to kind of recognize me. You know, I didn't really prepare much to say, but yeah, I just wanna say thank you to everybody here and to you guys.
Well, I take exception because I know that Boy Scouts are always prepared, and that's their motto. I know you're ready, Drew, and we are just proud and we're honored to have you here. Thank you so much. Would the family care for a photograph or something at this time? Okay, if we can do that. The council members would like to go down in front and be with Drew.
I'll get one of all of you together first. Thank you so much.
I apologize. I said something, I didn't realize that. We're honored to have him. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, especially Drew and Prashan family. Moving along in the agenda for the Board of Finance election of officers, do we have a motion to?
Make a motion to nominate Mike Bovat as president.
Second. I have a motion, I have a second. Any other considerations for president? If not, could I have a vote? I have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Okay, thank you. Election of a Vice President, do I have a motion for a Vice President?
I make a motion to nominate Christian Jorgensen as Vice President.
I second.
I have a motion, I have a second for Vice President for Christian Jorgensen. Any other nominations? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you all. Item four, minutes, January 25th, 2023. Do I have a motion for the minutes for? Motion to approve. To approve the minutes for January 25th, 2023? Sorry, let me cut you out. Motion to approve. Yes.
I second.
I have a, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Any public comment for the Board of Finance? Any public comment? No public comment? Moving to number six, new business aid, consider acceptance and approval of the 2023 finance report. Do I have a motion for acceptance of this report?
Mr. President, the Clerk Treasurer was gonna make the presentation.
At this time?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Beth?
Yep. I'll wait, Angela's gonna bring it up. It's just a quick PowerPoint presentation. Okay, so we're ready for slide one. This slide represents the town's total cash balance, balances. You'll see in January of 2023, we started with a total of $44,809,444. The fund report will show an ending balance of $44,341,309, or 1% decrease. The report that, that I will present today will take into account encumbrances to show the entire financial story because they are material in size. If you guys recall from your last meeting, you passed encumbrances in the amount of We have to account for these encumbrances because they were incurred in 2023 and they will be paid from the 2023 budget. So if you factor in encumbrances, which are due and owing, that would bring our cash balance to $39,947,358, or an 11% decrease. Next slide. How did we get to $4 million in encumbrances? This slide will show you by department. Now, the one that might stick out is the Town Council at 3.3 million, but what I do want to point out is that a lot of this accounts for various different townwide paving and road improvement projects that were completed in 2023 and will carry over into 2024. The next slide goes over our general fund balances. One of the main funds that we always keep an eye on is our general fund. You will see that we started off 2023 with $3,857. Our 2023 fund report shows that we ended with a $21,177, or half of a percent increase, but again, when you factor in $293,000 and 200, sorry, $293,241 in general fund encumbrances for the outstanding expenses, you would see a decrease of $272,064, or 7%. How did we get to 293,000? The next slide will show you again by department how those encumbrances broke down, again specifically for the general fund. Okay, the next slide looks, takes into account receipts. Our receipts exceeded projections by $680,806, or 8%. This was primarily because of earnings on our investments, which totaled $693,561 receiveded into the general fund. The next slide takes a look at our disbursements, which were over budget by $963,550, or 12%. This was primarily due to additional appropriations from last year, which totaled $1,051,32. And you can see what the additional appropriations were for, which was town health insurance, legal and engineering, the West 85th Project, a remodel, police vehicle, fire department travel and training, and some animal control supplies. Moving on to our water funds, we started 2023 with a combined cash balance of $11,739,000 and ended 2023 with $11,453,000, 2% decrease. This is mainly due to our water bond. We started doing some water-related projects, and so, you know, that, that's where the decrease came from here. Next slide looks at the wastewater funds. We started the year with $4,427,000 and ended with $5,113,000. That accounts for a 16% increase. This is mainly due to our additional customer base. Last fund that we're gonna take a look at are our TIF funds. We started 2023 with $67,429. Our fund report will show $703,000 is our ending balance. It's important to note here that we have a temporary outstanding, temporary loan due to the CCD fund in the amount of $292,900, and we have bond payments due in the amount of $584,000. So this, this is an area we wanna make sure we're taking a look at. Next slide goes over our investments. Investments totaled $6,734,000, spread out between 13 different funds, as shown. Interest rates were fantastic and ranged from 4.925% to 5.571%. We posted $287,167 in interest earnings, which was a 4.3% return on our investments. Standard and Poor's. The S&amp;P rating is a credit score that describes the general creditworthiness of a company, city, or country that issues debt. The S&amp;P company rates how likely debt will be repaid from the entity in question. So we range anywhere from a double A to an A+ on our most recent debt ratings, which is good. So our outstanding debt. The town currently has $7,136 in outstanding debt for a street sweeper lease. The building corp was for public, the public safety building, public works building, and town hall renovations, and the GO bond was for the 93rd Intersection Project and some prior litigation expenses. The next slide looks at our redevelopment, which currently has $8,214,000 in outstanding debt. The RDA bonds of 2014 were for townwide paving projects. Redevelopment district bonds of 2018 were for the Shops 96 Project, and the economic development revenue bonds of 2023 is a developer bond only payable with taxes of that specific development and not of the town. So basically, there's no risk to the taxpayers on that last bond. It's not even really our debt, but we show it. Waterworks bonds has $8,935,000 in outstanding debt. The bonds of 2017 were just simple refunding bonds for a better interest rate. 2021 was for the various water projects and water main replacement projects. Your Sewage Works currently has $2,700,000 in outstanding debt. In 2012, bonds were refunded again for a better interest rate. And the last two items, the additional capacity buy-in to Sheraville Sewage Works and Town of Sheraville Sewage Works bonds, those are payments we make to Sheraville, they're not actually our debt. We disclose it regardless for the sake of transparency. So you'll see we have 26 million roughly in outstanding debt. Okay, sorry. Assess value. Our assessed value continues to outpace Lake County. We saw a 7.9% increase, and our assessed value is now over $2 billion. Assess value is important because it determines our tax rate. When you compare our debt that we just looked at on the previous slide to assessed value ratio, you will see that our town is in good shape. For a town of our size, our debt represents only 1% of our assessed value. Tax rates. So assessed value leads right into tax rates. St. John has the lowest tax rate in Lake County of 0.4337 per $100 of assessed value. As you can see, the average is 1.2720 per $100 of assessed value for the communities listed on this, on the screen. So we're doing well as far as our tax rates are concerned. Circuit breaker is the next slide. Circuit breaker is a cap on property tax payments made by a taxpayer. So for example, if a home is assessed at $100,000, this residential homestead is capped at 1% of assessed value, meaning the taxpayer will pay more than $1,000 in all property taxes. If the tax belt bill sent to the taxpayer is $1,100, the taxpayer still only pays $1,000, and the $100 not paid is what is labeled as circuit breaker loss. So this loss then becomes shared proportionately by all the overlapping units. So for 2023, St. John saw $17,000 in circuit breaker loss, so not bad. Property taxes is the next slide. So as usual, we had a phenomenal tax collection rate in 2023 of 101.18%. You may ask, how can our, how can we have collections above taxes that were levied? That typically happens when delinquent payers from previous years catch up. New construction stats. So we had 254 new construction homes and three commercials properties built in 2023. Revenue was 37% below estimates and totaled $978,245 in miscellaneous revenue. Estimates are based off historical performance, and building permits fell materially last year. In fact, new construction and building fees were at their lowest point in the last five Last slide are just some accolades and fun facts. Safewise considered us to be the safest place to live in Indiana. Third best place to live in Lake County according to Niche. We are the seventh best place to live in Indiana according to HomeSnacks. And some fun facts, as of 2022, our population is 22,847. We are now the eighth largest municipality in Lake County. The median household income as of 2022 was $123,799. Median home value as of 2022 was $346,900, and our owner-occupied housing units as of 2022 is 97.4%.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Beth. Consider acceptance and approval of the financial report for 2023? So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five to zero. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned for the Board of Finance for the Town of St. John. Call to order for the Town of St. John Redevelopment Commission. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Beth?
Mike Bovat.
Present.
Christian Jorgensen.
Present.
Ann Oster.
Present.
Wayne Pondinas.
Present.
Gerald Swatz.
Present.
Bill Manassopoulos.
Here.
Joe Svetnov.
Here.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
Item four, approval of the minutes. Consider approval of the minutes for January 24th, 2024. Move to approve.
I second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item five, old business. Mr. Manassopoulos, any old business do you know?
None at this time.
Thank you. Item six, new business. Any new business?
None this time either, Mr. President.
Item seven, reports and correspondence. Mr. Manassopoulos, any reports and correspondence?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Item eight, payment of the bills. A motion to approve the Accounts Payable voucher dated February 28th, 2024, in the amount of $2,107.50.
I make a motion to approve the Accounts Payable voucher dated February 28th, 2024, in the amount of $2,107.50.
Second. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Any public comment for the Redevelopment Commission at this time? Any public comment? No public comment. Motion to adjourn? To move.
I second.
Call to order for the St. John Town Council meeting. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance again?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you could remain standing for just a moment, for a moment of silence. Rory took care of the Eagle Scout, Mr. Drew. Moving to item five, Fire Department swearing-in ceremonies. I'm sorry, I missed the roll call. Ms. Beth?
Mike Bovat.
Present.
Christian Jorgensen.
Present.
Ann Oster.
Present.
Wayne Pondinas.
Present.
Gerald Swatz.
Here.
Bill Manassopoulos.
Here.
Joe Svetnov.
Here.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
Thank you, Ms. Beth. Item five, Fire Department swearing-in ceremonies. Fire Chief Shane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Council. Thank you for letting us be here tonight and recognize our firefighters. We have two different groups that we're gonna do swearing-in tonight. So the first ceremony is our two new hires. They are new career firefighters that work with us. They work on a 24-hour shift off 48 hours. They have completed their two-week orientation and have been assigned to shift. They are doing excellent, and we are proud of them, and welcome to the St. John Fire Department. I wanna wish them a happy and healthy career with the St. John Fire Department. I would like to first call up firefighter Robert Marziano. Robert is a firefighter EMT and has been assigned to the A shift. Robert started off as a paid-on-call firefighter with us, and he will be starting paramedic school in 2025. His badge number's gonna be 32, and he will be bashed by his father, Steve Marziano.
It's an honor and privilege to be here in front of all of you today. This is a very special event for me, and also for Rob, my family, all his friends. There's new family, Fire Department. We got some of my old family here. I'm a 32 member, 32-year member of the Chicago Fire Department. I'm retired. My son Anthony is up there with us today. He's a member of the Burbank Fire Department. I couldn't be prouder of these two guys here, and it's just an honor to be here, and an honor to give my son his Fire Department badge today, so. Pretty good, that. You're safe, career.
hire, V. If you and your family can come up. And he will be bashed tonight by his son, Adian V. V started off as a volunteer firefighter in Merrillville about 10 years ago, when I talked to him a little bit ago, and he said it was still in his blood, and he wanted to do firefighting full, full-time. V is a firefighter EMT and has been assigned to the C shift. V will also be starting paramedic school in 2025. His badge number will be number 33.
Okay, if you wanna raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Indiana. And that I will faithfully. Impartially. And diligently. Discard all my duties. As a firefighter EMT. Of the Town of St. John. Lake County, Indiana. According to law. And to the best of my abilities.
All right, I got one more group. We're gonna do this as a big, um, group, so I'm gonna kinda explain what they are, and then they'll all come up at once. So the next group is our new paid-on-call firefighters. These guys live in town and respond from their home. They also train on Monday nights for approximately about two to three hours every, every week. They have completed all their training, which consists of the Fire Academy, which lasts about five and a half months and is three days a week. They completed a total of around 400 hours of training. They have received all the fire certifications that are required by the state of Indiana, and have also completed a, their probation period with the St. John Fire Department. I would like to call up the following. Mike Alonso, who will be badge Department. I would like to call up the following. Mike Alonso, who will be bashed by his wife, Lauren Alonso. His badge number will be 196. Jake Belisick, who will be bashed by his mother, Crystal Belisick. His badge number is 198. Cody Fritz, who will be bashed by his mother, Tracy Fritz, badge number 195. Mike Hill, who will be bashed by his wife, Jenny Hill. His badge number is 194. And Dustin Crocker, who will be bashed by his wife. And Dustin Crocker, who will be bashed by his wife, Emily Crocker, his badge number's one ninety-one. Congratulations, guys. Okay. So the family can come up and do the badging. You guys in?
Okay, if you guys want to raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye, state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
Okay.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And diligently.
And diligently.
Discharge all my duties.
Discharge all my duties.
As a firefighter.
As a firefighter.
Of the town of Saint John.
Of the town of Saint John.
Lake County, Indiana.
Lake County, Indiana.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my abilities.
And to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
All right, everybody come up here for a vote, everybody.
Sure, I, sure, I don't mind.
We can never make too big a thing of this stuff.
What's that?
We can never make too big a thing of this stuff.
Everyone, and before our firefighters leave, before you guys leave tonight, on behalf of the Town Council, we just really want to say thank you so much for your dedication, your commitment, your service, your valor. Chief Shane Adams, we're very honored that you are all here tonight and I can tell you the residents and the community of Saint John, we appreciate everything you do each and every day. Thank you so much.
Excuse me. Sorry.
Okay, moving forward with the, uh, rest of the council meeting, I have a letter that I'd like to read and to the record. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I address you today regarding recent events in our town. The newly-elected Town Council members, plus the previously-elected Town Council member, had a Town Council meeting on January first. During this meeting, Town Council member Gerald Swetts interrupted the meeting, breaking protocol, and wanted to go on record. Mr. Swetts stated that doing things right and properly and transparently matters and that is exactly what the newly-elected Town Council did. Mr. Swetts stated, no one with any authority approved or called this meeting. Therefore, this meeting is not duly and properly called. That statement was untrue. Mr. Swetts stated, not proper, nor was it properly noticed by this Town Council and it is not authorized to call any meeting until now. That statement was untrue. Mr. Swetts stated, it is being held in violation of open-door laws. That statement was untrue. Complaints that we had violated the open-door law in the state of Indiana were filed against the Saint John Town Council with the Public Access Counselor. On Friday, February twenty-third, Luke H. Britt, the State of Indiana Public Access Counselor, gave his ruling on this matter. Conclusion, based on the foregoing, it is the opinion of this office that the Saint John Town Council did not violate the open-door law. We pride ourselves on integrity, transparency, and trust within our council. But regrettably, a breach of those values has occurred. False accusations made by one councilman against others not only tarnish the reputation of individuals, but also rode the foundation of trust upon which our community stands. When a councilman chooses deceit over honesty, it undermines the very fabric of our democratic process. Such actions sow seeds of discord, breed mistrust among colleagues, and ultimately hinder our ability to effectively serve the needs of our town. We must remember that the decisions made within these walls directly impact the lives of every citizen. They deserve leaders who operate with integrity and truthfulness, not those who would resort to deception for personal gain or political advantage. As we move forward, let us reaffirm our commitment to honesty, accountability, and mutual respect. Let us hold ourselves and each other to the highest standard of conduct, ensuring that the trust of our community remains unshaken. Together, we can overcome this challenge and emerge stronger, united in our dedication to the well-being and the prosperity of our town. Thank you. Moving to item.
May I respond, Mr. President?
Not at this time. I have the floor, moving to item seven or six, public comments. Are there any public comments? Do we have a sign-in? I'm sorry. Did you sign in, sir?
Yes, sir.
I know if you want to come up and, uh, state your name.
I have no problem if I'm the only one, because I always sign the bottom of the list.
Okay, if you want to come forward and state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Terry Nelliman. I'm a current homeowner, I at ninety-five-hundred West One Hundred and Third Place. We've been there approximately five years and we are a total, um, twenty-four years plus, uh, resident of, uh, Saint John. Uh, the reason why I'm here today is, uh, we're going to have, uh, item eight and nine coming up, old business and new business. I don't know where this would be classified, but, uh, as, uh, the majority, not the majority, but, uh, council members know, I'm sure our legal coun, new legal council might not have any information in regards to, um, Mr. Swetts', uh, holding of documentations and stuff, um, from the federal government. So with that said, uh, on item eight and nine, you're going to use old business and new business. At this time, I would like for the council to please take a, a executive recess during the eighth or ninth, um, item, which is old business or new business, and request Mr. Gerald Swetts to resign from the Town Council. Okay? There's no sense in me going too far. There's documents that have been submitted to the superintendent, uh, excuse me, the Building Department, documents submitted to the Town Council, documents submitted personally into the hands of Gerald Swetts, which was president of the Town Council at the time. We don't need no cover-up, concealment, all these C-words we can use, we're not going to get into it. But the point is, is please, at this time, under item eight or nine, take a, uh, a recess, an executive recess, and please ask Mr. Swetts to resign. He is a disgrace to the town. He is embarrassing the new Town Council. And my three minutes are probably up. I don't want to go any longer than that. I want to thank you very much for your time and I want to thank you very, very much for the public comment and supposedly, we don't have three, three or four paragraphs to follow under, uh, public comment no more. But thank you again very much. Please take that executive break and please highly stress Mr. Swetts to resign on his own.
We recognize your, your comments.
Thank you.
We recognize you.
Thank you.
Item seven, approval of minutes. A, January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, meeting minutes? And B, February twenty-four, twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, study meeting minutes? Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
Mr. President, I move to, uh, adopt the January twenty-fourth and February twenty-first meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Item eight, old business. Mr. Manassopoulos, any old business at this time? Thank you. Item nine, new business. A, financial matters of corporation. One, consider approval of progress payment to Milestone Contractors North Incorporated for the twenty-twenty-three dash one CCMG road paving project in the amount of one million ninety-two thousand four hundred and three dollars and seventy-nine cents and authorize the clerk treasurer to issue payment from the lo, local road and bridge fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Number two, consider approval of progress payment to Milestone Contractors North Incorporated for the twenty-twenty-three dash one CCMG additional work in the amount of two hundred and fifty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars ninety-eight cents and authorize the clerk treasurer to issue payment from the ARPA fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Number three, consider approval of progress payment to First Group Engineering for the Ninety-third Avenue Corridor Study in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred and six dollars and twenty-four cents and authorize the clerk treasurer to issue payment from the twenty-twenty GO bond fund.
So moved.
I second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Number four, consider approval of progress payment to First Group Engineering for the Ninety-third Avenue roadway from Kilman Street to eleven hundred feet west of US Forty-One Project in the amount of three thousand seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents and authorize the clerk treasurer to issue payment from the ARPA fund.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Item five, consider approval of progress payment to FH Pension for the Ninety-third Avenue and US Forty-One roadway intersection improvement project in the amount of seventy-two thousand thirteen dollars and forty-one cents and authorize the clerk treasurer to issue payment from the twenty-twenty GO bond fund.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Number six, requests to purchase. There are a total of seventeen requests to purchase in the combined total of two hundred and eleven thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-nine cents for approval. Do I have a motion?
Two hundred and five thousand one hundred and eleven oh seven?
Two eleven three ninety-six seventy-nine. Number six, two eleven.
There was an addition.
Oh.
Made this morning for emergency medical products. It's for the Fire Department, it's, it's deemed an emergency purchase for, and I don't even want to say the, I don't know how to even say the name of it, but it's some sort of.
So I can.
Something that they need, I don't know. I'm so, I'm so sorry.
I apologize, it's, it's not that much of a difference, it was just, I'm working off of, apparently.
I'm sorry, Tom, I, I botched that.
An older.
If you could just give a rundown.
Agenda.
My name's, uh, Tom McCauley, I'm the EMS chief and training officer. Um, we deemed it an emergency, we've been working since November to, um, purchase channels for innovation scopes. They're for, uh, high priority emergencies, patients that are unstable and they have, we have to take their airway, um, and breathe for them. So based on the protocol we have, we have to have a video scope. Ours are, um, almost eight years old and now we're no longer able to get the channels for them, for individual use. Um, we were promised channels in December, January, and they didn't come, so we've been researching and, uh, pricing out newer, more advanced scopes for reasonable pricing. Um, we settled on McGrath, uh, the price per scope, which we need for, for each of our ALS units, is fifteen hundred and seventy-one dollars, I believe, is what's on the quote. Comparatively speaking, it, there are roughly about three thousand dollars. Bounty, which purchased the EMP, is, um, worked with us and, uh, cut the pricing considerably. So, uh, we deemed it an emergency because we have one channel blade in reserve, we carry two on each unit, and in the last week, we've innovated two patients, so. Really, I consider it an emergency and I, that's why.
I apologize, gentlemen, I just had a, a wrong number in mind.
No.
I had already reviewed what it is that you guys had, so.
I'm welcome to questions, if you guys have any.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you very much, though. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Move to, uh, approve requests for purchase.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second.
Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries five to zero. Item seven, accounts payable voucher dated February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, representing payment for payroll. for payroll, supplies, services, and equipment rendered to the town of St. John in the combined total of $3,910,154,154.85.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Accounts payable voucher on number eight, dated February 28th, 2024, representing payment for services rendered to the town of St. John in the combined total of $650.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero.
Mr. President, on item nine with the Vector truck, if you can also add in allowing the public works department to trade in the old unit because that price is based off of the traded.
With trade-in. Item nine, consider motion to approve additional options as listed in the request to purchase to be included with the purchase of 2024 Vector 2100I and Freightliner 114SD chassis, bringing the total purchase to $474,822 with the trade-in.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. B, Kilman Street and School Street intersection improvement project bid opening. Town manager, Mr. Mansopolis?
So the town went out for bid for the Kilman and School Street intersection improvement. We received two bids. The proof of publications are all in order. The first bid is from Milestone. The total bid for Milestone is $436,137.39.
Can you repeat that one more time because I didn't write it down. I'm sorry.
Sorry. $436,137,090, I'm sorry, $137.39.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The second bid is from Reeve Riley. Having trouble with your ladder opener.
It's yours.
Maybe that's why. The bid from Reeve Riley is $593,192.20. All bids would be given to the town attorney to ensure they are compliant and to the town engineer for review.
Thank you, Mr. Mansopolis. Motion to consider acceptance of the bids to be reviewed by the town attorney?
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Item C, consider ordinance 1819, an ordinance amending the vacation policy for the St. John Fire Department on second reading. Do I have a motion?
I make a-
I'm sorry. Ms. Oyster has it.
I make a motion to consider ordinance 1819 and ordinance amending the vacation policy for St. John Fire Department on second reading.
Second. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. D, consider agreement with Barnes and Thorberg, general obligation bonds of 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. E, consider ordinance 1822, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds of the town for the purpose of funding the costs of certain road projects and expenses in connection with the issuance of same on first reading.
So moved, Mr. President.
Now second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero.
No, there is no second reading.
No.
That'd be on the next one, right? F, consider ordinance 1823, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds derived from the sale of general obligation bonds of the town on first reading.
So moved, Mr. President.
I second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Item G, consider resolution 2024-02-28, a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to avoid certain stale dated checks of the town.
So moved, Mr. President.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Item H, consider resolution 2024-02-28A, a resolution declaring uncollectible accounts of the town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, as bad debt and authorizing collection efforts to cease, allowing the clerk treasurer to write off set accounts.
So moved, Mr. President.
I second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. I, consider resolution 2023-02-28B, a resolution declaring an official intent to reimburse expenditures which may be incurred with respect to certain road projects of the town.
So moved, Mr. President.
I second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. J, consider motion to approve agreement with Furman Yuzuda Janitorial Services LTD for cleaning services upon favorable review from town attorney.
So moved, Mr. President.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Mr. President, at this time, we're going to have a couple of revisions on that janitorial contract. So I just suggested this time that it be deferred until next month.
We do have it down as upon favorable review of town attorney. Would you prefer it that way?
That's fine. Whatever the council considers. Just remember, I have to make some revisions to the indemnification waivers.
So that was my, so my motion, and I'm sorry because I didn't read it all the way fully, just to speed things along, but these are conditioned upon favorable review of the town attorney. So-
No, no problem with that.
We are not, we are not, I'm not moving to approve the agreement as is. It is conditioned upon the town attorney's approval and/or changes.
Excellent. I'll work with town administration if that completes this part.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, Beth, is that clear enough?
Yep.
Okay.
We have a motion from Vice President Jorgensen. Do we have a second?
I second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Item K, consider motion to approve agreement with Paycom Payroll LLC DBA Paycom Payroll Software Solution.
I make a motion to consider approval for the agreement with Paycom Payroll LLC DBA Paycom Payroll Software Solution.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. L, consider motion for appointment of shared ethics commission, Beth Hernandez as delegate and Gregory Wolagorsky as commissioner.
So moved.
I second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
You really want that, Beth?
I do.
Just making sure.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Jorgensen.
I love it. Yeah, I mean, it is pretty dry. Sorry about that.
It is. Item M, consider motion to accept uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement for Cliff Rowe.
So moved.
I second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. N, consider motion to approve Baker Tilly Annual Disclosure of Bonds Agreement.
I will move. So moved for that one. I will consider and approve Baker Tilly's annual disclosure of bonds agreement.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Item O, consider motion to direct the plan commission to initiate a public hearing for the purpose of a text amendment to the town zoning ordinance number 1483, Section B, and corresponding section of town code 24-42 to repeal both sections in their entirety.
Mr. President, I am going to make that motion. I asked for that to be put on the agenda. And unless there's any discussion on it, so moved. If you could explain it, I'd appreciate it. Certainly. Those two corresponding archaic ordinances hamstring the town into a situation that, specifically for annexation, that should not be there. We intend to, as a council, expand the town to the best of our ability lest we lose the opportunity. And the two provisions that were passed back in, I believe, 2008, and I believe the town attorney can correct me, would hamstring the town to not only unanimous vote, but also to an R1 restriction, which is, quite frankly, utterly ridiculous. So in the efforts to expand the town, increase commercial development in the town through our annexation process, those two need to be eliminated. Town attorney, if you'd like to elaborate, please do. I'm sure you can.
The only thing I'd like to elaborate on is, first of all, totally bolster you in the fact that it was 2008 when the ordinance was passed. And secondly, there's been an existing legal question for a long time that continues to remain, to remain to be unanswered, and that's whether a current town council, combined successor town councils, on discretionary matters such as annexation itself. Our view is that they cannot. So this is a question that remains to exist and one that needs to be rectified by the town council. That's why it's a strong opinion that the annexation provision be eliminated at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Svetinoff. Jerry, any other?
No, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a motion.
Motion by Mr. Jorgensen? I have a second.
I second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries four to one. Item P, consider approval for release of performance surety, Greystone Unit 3 Block 2, in the amount of $76,740.40.
So moved, Mr. President.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Q, consider approval for acceptance of two-year maintenance cash escrow, Greystone Unit 3 Block 2, in the amount of $155,883.90.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. R, consider approval for release of performance surety, Greystone Unit 3 Block 3, in the amount of $13,200.
So moved, Mr. President.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. S, consider approval for acceptance of two-year maintenance cash escrow, Greystone Unit 3 Block 3, in the amount of $121,868.10.
So moved, Mr. President. I'll take any escrow.
I second.
I got a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five to zero. T, consider authorization for Robinson Engineering to repair bid documents related to the Gates Improvement Projects and authorize the bidding of the same.
So moved, Mr. President.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mr. Mansopolis, did we want to comment on this? Do we have somebody that wanted to speak to this for the public, perhaps?
So Dave from Robinson Engineering is here. Can you answer any questions that-
Dave, I think it might be good to just inform everybody what this is in context.
Yep, sounds good. So we came up with a four-phase plan for Gates Park. The first phase, which is the complete of the loop, that's the walking path, that's the red on the bottom, that was bid last year. We're waiting for weather to break to start construction. The motion just approved by the council is for Phase Two, which is everything in blue. So that consists of lighting at the skate park, some security lighting at the pickleball courts and the playground, the pickleball courts themselves, the small shaded pavilion in between the pickleball courts and shaded benches, both at the playground and at the pickleball court. And we're on track to have these bid and awarded in April or May of this year so we can get everything built in 2024.
Thank you for that, Dave.
Thank you.
Just to add on to that, that this came with a favorable recommendation from the park board on January 24th.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mansopolis. I did have a motion. I did have a second. Everybody voted in favor of it, so the motion did carry. Item U, consider favorable recommendation from the plan commission to approve the updates according to the ordinance number 1707 of the subdivision control ordinance as codified as town code Section 21A.
Mr. President, I made a motion to deny the recommendation for ordinance number 1707 and to not move forward with saying.
I have a motion for denial of this recommendation from the plan commission. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second for denial. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Motion carries four to one. Moving to ten reports and correspondence, and I was just gonna ask real quick before I get to the town council. Do we have any updates from first group? Is Evan in the audience? There you have it.
So as far as the ready third project goes, they've started to slowly come back out as the pieces are finally coming in to finish the ornamentals, all the decorative lighting. Today, they switched most of the poles out. If there's a luminaire still on the top of it, those are old ones, they're still coming down. I've actually was informed, the Public Works needed three of those already, so they're already being put to use. So they're being returned to the town, so these also are being replaced as part of the overall project. I just spoke with Passion Day on site. They intend to be back on site by the second week of March, assuming weather stays sixty, seventy degrees, they'll be out here. They have relatively little work left to do. Little bit of concrete on the corner of forty-one. Unfortunately, there's a, if there was a Nippsco line hit over on Kyle Mintz, we got a little bit of concrete over there to still do. But we anticipate being done end of April, I would say, and that includes any striping. Then we'll have to do the permanent striping, because what's out here now, for anybody doesn't remember, is just temporary paint to make it through the winter time until we could put the real striping in place. Any other questions?
Kyle Mintz, the paving, now the water mains in.
Mm-hmm.
They gotta put the sidewalk in, they gotta do the paving. That should be pretty, that should be done by, what, July?
The contract documents, we've asked them to be completed. I forget the exact date, but it's the end of July, so it doesn't affect school start backup.
Okay, good.
But yes, assuming there is a favorable bid, we can recommend that project will start April, mid-April, depending on the utilities moving. Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Evan?
Thank you, sir.
Bill, sorry, I should've told you what page those numbers were on.
What's that?
I should've told you what page those numbers were on.
I bottomed, Evan. We're good.
All right, thank you for that. A, town council, any comments from the town council?
I do, Mr. President, if you don't mind. A little explanation, only because I got one nay vote. And I wanted to make some explanation on item U, which was the subdivision control ordinance. I began to go through it. I was involved in the control ordinances in the county when I was there, and I'm familiar with it. And typically, this process takes years. How this could be possibly rammed through as quickly as it was is unconscionable to me. I made it through, of a hundred and thirty-three pages, I made it through oh eighteen of them, all of which I've marked up and cannot understand why they would be included within this ordinance. I believe the town attorney as well has been involved in several revisions of ordinances like this, and I'm just bewildered at how the previous plan commission could have come up with this in such a short period of time to hamstring the town and not consider the ramifications of what it is that they proposed. And again, like I said, eighteen, of eighteen of a hundred and thirty-three pages, I have changes to propose changes and questions to almost every single page on there. You cannot simply change a subdivision control ordinance in that amount of time without instruction from your engineering, without consideration and committee meetings with regard to the ramifications it's gonna have for the town going forward and looking into the future. I don't know how or why this occurred, or why it's even before us, or who even authorized this to be done in this kind of fashion. But that is the reason why I voted to deny it, and I appreciate my colleagues supporting me on this one, and Mr. Svetinoff has anything else to say on it. I know he has plenty of experience on this as well. But this process typically takes years to actually get done in the correct fashion. So again, I want to explain to the public why it is I denied it, and also to my single nay.
Thank you. Joe?
Just really quickly, on the subdivision control ordinance, it does, it does take a great amount of time to consider this type of ordinance itself. It should be thought through, it should be done with committees, with focus groups, and even with consulting being brought on board as well as engineer. So this is a matter that, probably for a new council, to imagine the subdivision control ordinance, bringing this back up at a later date, to be considered by you, as a new town council, give a new direction, might be advisable. So at this time, that's the recommendation.
I think that the proper thing for us to do is end up forming a committee and delegating authority as to how that's going to be completed and who's gonna take the lead control on it. The plan commission itself cannot do it. It will take the assistance of other experts, and we're going to, as a council, have to agree on who those people are going to be and who's gonna work with the plan commission to be able to do it and to do it right. So hopefully that's something that we can bring up at a later time or an exec session when we need to. So anyway, that was the only explanation that I had, ladies and gentlemen, so.
And my understanding too, Mr. Svetinoff, was that we didn't do something tonight, then it would just advance? Is that correct?
Correct. If it enacted within ninety days from when it was first brought up before the plan commission, it would, it would be, it would render as, it was rendered as, so tonight you had to add, otherwise, subdivision control ordinance would be, would go on live. And you were, your hand was forced to not be tapped, I guess, basically.
That was my understanding. Thank you, Mr. Svetinoff. Any other council members?
Yeah, I do, as a matter of fact. Couple things. First of all, I'd like to thank Beth for the detailed report on the finances. I know this isn't the finance board, but thank you for the detailed report. I think it did a pretty good job of showing that we did okay with finances over the last few years. The other thing is, is the comments by our, by Mr. President. I too discussed the decision with the public access counselor on Monday. And my concerns were if it was properly noticed, since I didn't receive any communication or agenda prior to the meeting, I was concerned about who was authorized to call the meeting and the fact that it wasn't posted on the town's website or the clerk treasurer's Facebook page like we always do. And he told me that his criteria for proper notice, or that he did as far as whether he determined it was legal or not, was the fact that it needed to have forty-eight hours advanced notice to the newspaper and forty-eight hours posted at the town hall, and he was convinced that those conditions were met. But the other issues that I brought up and concerns, he says, were not his jurisdiction, they were local concerns. So the decision, I think, doesn't validate your claims of transparency and communication. I think it did just the opposite. You tried to hide that meeting. It was never notified, I was never notified or provided materials. There was any posting on social media as there normally is. And then you violated town ordinance two dash eleven, which stipulates Robert's Rules of Order shall govern the proceedings. Robert's Rules of Order states for special meetings, they can call by the chair or a minimum of two members of the board. And also, that notice must be sent in advance to all members of the board. I offered to work with you guys a number of times, which would have eliminated a lot of these issues, but you chose to ignore my offer and work in secret. So my statements weren't misleading or bombastic, they were just the facts as I saw them. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to say that-
Oh, go ahead.
I'd just like to respond to that just slightly, because, Mr. Swatz, councilman, I saw you guys have a meeting on January first when you first took office. Isn't that correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So you wouldn't have been unaware that a January first meeting would have been out of protocol, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So also, it's also my understanding that the packet and the materials for the January first meeting were left in town hall several days prior to that January first meeting, and that you did not come into town hall and pick them up, and they left, and they stayed where they sat.
How was I supposed to know they were there?
Well, as a councilman, and you were still a city councilman, I would believe you would have an obligation to come in and check your mail. So all I say is, I believe some of this is, quite frankly, on you, Mr. Swatz.
Yeah, well, I disagree. I mean, we worked with the prior town council with the transition. They're the ones that posted the meeting so we could have one on January first. We announced it to the public, we had a big crowd out. The only crowd that you guys had were the ones that you personally invited, so.
And you know what, let's, this is really not gonna be a platform for that.
Good point, Mr. President.
We're not gonna have this as a platform for that. I read what I read because it was public information, it came out in the newspaper, and I responded to it. All this other chit-chat, we're good. Mr. Pondinas?
Yeah, we, with the water side, there's four water main projects that went out for bid. The bids came in. I think next water board meeting, the war death, probably the lowest bidder, and I think that's a great thing. Those projects have been sitting for a while, but they're now gonna be done, and if everything goes well, April of this year, they should start construction on those water mains of those projects.
Anyone else, Ms. Oster?
Just real fast, I just want to invite everybody to, if you're not on the Facebook page for the Parks and Recreation, to just maybe like it or just be aware with Beth's newsletter and stuff. There's a lot of fun stuff coming up in this, during the summer, spring and summer for the town, for the kids, for families. They're doing a great job organizing stuff, so I just want everybody to be aware of that. I also want to congratulate all the new, our new fire, our firemen, our volunteers, everybody, and thank you, Mr. Marciano from Chicago Fire Department for your service and your son as well. Thank you, guys. That was very moving when you pinned your son. That was great. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Oster. Any other town council member comments?
One last sec-
Yes.
I'm sorry, only because Wayne brought it up too. In one particular bid, we only received one with regard to the change in media, and we are going to be putting that out to bid again in order to obtain a better result for the town and a lower price and save us money. So that'll be coming on down the road. I don't necessarily think it's an emergency basis that we have to call it, because I think we have time. However, there will be another bid coming out. Rest assured to the public that when this, when that occurs and we receive only one bid, oftentimes, it's, it's an anomaly and it's unacceptable. So in the best interest of the town and our finances, we will put it back out to bid to obtain the best result we possibly can and save our town whatever cost we possibly can. So with that, I leave it alone.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you. B, town manager, Mr. Manasopoulos?
Mr. President, I know you didn't want this conversation going on during the meeting, but just to touch on a few points, as far as this meeting not being called on social media, when this administration, new administration of myself took over, the prior IT person had handcuffed us as far as our social media accounts. We recently went to court with our attorney, and he was compelled to do that. As far as any materials that was left, there was materials and packets that was found on January second when I finally received keys to that office, even though we took over on January first, and I'll leave it at that.
Any other comments, Mr. Manasopoulos?
That is it.
Okay, thank you. And item C, clerk treasurer, Ms. Beth?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you for that. And I'm gonna ask the town attorney, Mr. Svetinoff, did you have any comments for anything? Yes, you have. Thank you very much.
They're always picking on the attorneys, man.
Of course. Item eleven, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I got a motion, I got a-